We're going to start with a regional transportation plan update and Tuolton's project list. And then have Kim, Cody, and Mike.
Side appearance here. Good evening, council. I'm here to introduce Cody, our management analyst, Mike McCarthy, our city engineer. And they're going to give you an update on the regional transportation plan project list for 2023. And they're going to talk about Tuolton projects. And Cody and Mike worked on this together with county as well as Metro. Cody will be presenting, Mike's here for technical support. I'm here for moral support. So there you go.
Thanks, Kim.
I will be presenting with the project staff and planning of Metro for analysis and conclusion of the 2023 regional transportation plan update. The bill is referred to as RCT forward. For the first time in RCT's history, Metro is asking for a letter from the elected body of HCC. Preventing a project list to ensure that elected officials are not only aware of the project staff are submitting on that list, but are also in agreement. Tonight's presentation is to bring you up to the projects we are submitting.
One of the key points on this, these are all projects that have been on our. And they've been on Metro's list. And we've had some minor changes, updated some things, adding in what was submitted for county MSTIP funding. Otherwise, these are the projects that have been on the list for a long time.
There we go. Okay, I think our quick is back in action. So, uh, planned for our presentation, we felt it would be helpful to provide a brief RTP overview, describe the call for project process. Uh, and then we will get into our review of the 2023 project list. We have a simple recommendation that we will walk through at the end of our presentation. We want to make sure there's plenty of time for questions and discussion. So a little bit about the RTP. Every five years, Metro updates the regional transportation plan with essentially a long range transportation system plan for the entire region, which guides planning efforts for all modes of transportation, including public transit, driving, walking, biking, and freight movement as well. The plan consists of a variety of components, including goals and performance targets and outcomes, which help to measure whether the region is meeting those goals. The last RTP was updated in 2018. Metro has been working on the 2023 update since back in fall of 2021. The plan also establishes policies, strategies, and it includes a financial plan for how transportation is prioritized and paid for. And one of the key components is the plan list of regional transportation priorities, also known as the project list, which we are discussing tonight. This really provides that information that Metro needs to do the modeling work around greenhouse gas emission targets and congestion and all that. And I think Mike mentioned this a little bit, but we really want to emphasize that the RTP is critical in in getting state, metro, and federal funding. So projects have to be on that list. So we want to be, make sure that as many of our projects are on that list as possible. So every county, city, and transportation agency in the region must identify their transportation project priorities through 2045. The project, the process requires careful coordination with the county and the cities in the county, as well as agencies like ODOT and TRIMET. Washington County is ultimately responsible for compiling a countywide list of projects and revenue. So we've been working really closely with them. In order to be eligible for inclusion, projects must be located on the regional system and within the metropolitan planning organization boundary. Help to achieve the RTP vision, goals, targets, and policies. Projects must come from adopted plans or strategies, as Mike mentioned, all of the projects we are proposing either came from our existing transportation system plan, parks master plan, or those projects that we have submitted for the county's MSTIP process in the past. And that's to ensure that the projects have gone through a public engagement process. And the cost of each project must be at least $2 million or be bundled with like projects or folded into some kind of funding program. So we started this process last September by developing a revenue projection, which comprises all of the available funding sources for transportation projects in the city. Those sources include Washington County's transportation development tax, fuel tax, vehicle registration fee, as well as Clackamas County's vehicle registration fee, the State of Oregon's gas tax apportionment and funding from House Bill 2017, and the city's park system development charges, some of the parks bond, a road utility fee, and urban renewal districts. We then split those revenue projections into two time periods, a near term bucket between 2024 and 2030, and a long term bucket between 2031 and 2045. Here is a table that shows our revenue projections broke down into each of those time periods. You'll note that the city's road utility fee isn't listed here, and that is because we allocate 100% of the road utility to operations and maintenance, not to capital projects. However, this does allow us to pay a little bit more of the state, state apportionment towards capital projects. So in total, we're projecting almost $36 million in revenue during the near term time period and close to $118 million during that long term period. So once we had developed this revenue projection, Washington County circulated a list of projects that were adopted in the 2018 RTP. We took a look through that and updated it by removing completed projects, revising some of the process, project scopes, and adjusting estimates, mostly to account for inflation. We then assigned those projects into three categories. A near term financially constrained list between 2024 and 2030. These are the highest priority projects that we actually think we can get to in this time period with our available funding. Long term financially constrained, which is the next level of priority. Again, projects we think we can get to within our revenue, but that fall outside of that first initial near term bucket. And then a strategic list, which includes projects of interest that just may not be viable in the immediate future with available funding. Quick note about the term financially constrained, it's kind of an odd term, but it basically just means the list that includes projects that fit with, within our budget. So finally, per Metro's requirement, those two financially constrained lists must be equal or less than those two cost targets that I showed earlier in the table. So with all that said, I will move on to a review of the projects unless Mike has anything to add to the RTP or the call for projects. Quick FYI, the Washington County Coordinating Committee did vote to endorse the county wide list of projects this afternoon, which includes all the projects that you will see here. There are project descriptions in your packet, so I'll just kind of read through the list of the projects. I'm going to focus mainly on this near term financially constrained. And then I'll just go through some project totals and kind of just flip through the other lists pretty quickly because they can kind of get long. So we have four projects on the near term financially constrained project list. The Boons Ferry Road at Tuolton Sherwood Intersection for about 11.4 million. Herman Road, Cypress Hill to 124th, again about 11.4 million. The Nyberg Creek Greenway Trail, the east portion of the trail from 65th to Martin Azzi, that's just over 5 million. Phase one of the 65th Avenue Project, this is a share you, shared use, use path and a turn lane, almost 7 million. And the total for this bucket is about $34,709,000. I'll just kind of flip through our long term financially constrained list here and let everybody kind of glance at the projects we have listed. But overall, the total for our long term financially constrained project list is just over 116 million. There's our total there. And then finally, our strategic list total is approximately 221.5 million. Take a second to just flip through our projects listed on the strategic list. There's our total again for this bucket. So we are not asking for any formal action this evening. This presentation is in preparation for a recommendation that will come before you at the next council meeting, which we will recommend approval of the 2023 RTP project list by resolution on the consent agenda. And then upon approval, we will draft an endorsement letter for your signature that we must submit to Metro by May 24. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Well, then I have a few. First, um, my first, I guess I just want to clarify a few things and get this confirmed with you. The Tuol moving forward bond money is not included in this list or the projects? Is that correct?
That is correct. I can let Mike elaborate on that a little bit.
So the timeframe for this is 2024 through 2030 for the first batch. So it's assumed that we get the Tuol moving forward projects done before then. It's possible some may extend beyond, but the plan is to have it all done before this timeframe.
And then, um, so we're just working on a, a new, or we're going to be working on a new TSP. So if we identify anything in that, that's a priority, will we have to wait till this process again in 2028 to add it to the list?
There. Depending on how high a priority, it could, things can get added midway. Typically, it's, it's an every five year process.
Okay, and then I noticed that in the funding sources, the parks bond money was included. And with the parks bond money, is that specifically for trails and not paving roads? Or what can the parks bond money be used for?
So regional trails count as regional transportation facilities, so they get included. So we worked with Ross and Rich and included the portion of the parks bond that would be used for regional trails.
Okay, great. And then the, my last question is just because with the tolling, I bring up 65th lot. And so what are the hopeful improvements on 65th?
The, what's in the near term is a turn lane on 65th at Borland, which is what we think is the capacity limiting point there. And then multi-use path along 65th, for people walking and biking. There's a longer term project for a more extensive improvement of 65th. That's, I forget if it's in the long term or the strategic list.
Okay, great. Anybody else have any questions? The mayor, Mayor Buick?
Just two comments, not really questions. The one comment that came up this.
We can't hear you.
Just a second, Mayor Buick, we're adjusting the volume in the.
Can you hear me now?
No.
How about now?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. So on the, the dollars, the eye popping amount of dollars, one of the things that was put out today was that these are no guarantees of income. These are just suggested pots of money that can be used in the future. So there's no guarantee where we're going to see some of this money, it just assumed. Uh, and as we're using this mainly for, you know, planning it out to 2045. So, uh, you know, something happens in the economy or like that, or grants disappear. Some of these projects might disappear because the funding source is not guaranteed. And then there was a late addition to the overall county's RTP that Southwest Corridor was put back on. The county was able to put together about $15 million. $2 million for the short term and another 12.7 for the long term to keep the Southwest Core project alive. Again, because as Cody mentioned, if you don't have these projects on your RTP, they will not get funded by the, you know, the state metro and the feds. So it's super important to have those placeholders. So over the weekend, there was a lot of scrambling done between TRIMET and the county to make sure Southwest Corridors did stay on the radar for the region.
Okay, is that enough for you? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Now we have the Tuolton's Inclusion Diversity Equity and Access Idea Advisory Committee and Megan and Betsy.
All right. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Buenas tardes. I'm Betsy Rodriguez-Ruth, and I'm the Community Engagement Coordinator for the city. And I'm here to present the draft ordinance for the creation of the Tuolton Inclusion Diversity Equity and Access Advisory Committee, also known as the IDEA Committee. And I'm happy to be here this evening presenting on this agenda topic. In my role as a community engagement coordinator, I'm very involved with the community. And in the five years I've been in this role, I've heard repeatedly from members of our community that equity is such an important topic to them. So I was excited to learn that an ad hoc committee was going to be created where the community was 100% included. So in my experience, co-facilitating the Equity Committee Planning Group was very unique. I had never participated in this type of group setting before, but I was glad to be part of this Equity Committee journey and to just help facilitate the discussions and even though some more challenging discussions. And I felt that way because I believe that the IDEA Committee, by creating the IDEA Committee, we are taking positive steps forward towards creating a more inclusive and equitable community. So before we jump into reviewing the draft ordinance itself, we wanted to set the context for this work. And as part of the city council's 2030 vision, it's to be a more inclusive community that promotes equity, diversity, and access, and creating meaningful quality of life for everyone. So the strategy was to create an advisory committee that was community led and driven. So we did. We created an ad hoc committee to help build the structure of the permanent committee. And this was a purpose statement that we had for the Equity Committee Planning Group as well, which they presented to city council in November, which I could go ahead and read. It says, oh, to create an ad hoc committee to help build the structure of the permanent committee by reviewing data about the community and city council initiatives, by sharing group members' lived experiences, and by participating in engaging discussions. And so this slide is a quick review of the timeline of the Equity Committee Planning Group. So the initiative for creating a permanent committee on diversity, equity, and inclusion started with the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments in July of 2021. The CCAA recommended the city council form an ad hoc committee to refine the scope of the work for the permanent committee. And then the city council tasked staff to create the ad hoc committee, and the recruitment for the Equity Committee Planning Group began in February of 2022. So 33 individuals applied and 15 were appointed to the planning group after interviews in April of 2022. And the planning group met six times between June and November. And you saw them present to their recommendation to the city council in November 28 of 22. So now I'm going to share some highlights of the Equity Committee Planning Group recruitment process. So we totally did a whole different approach with our recruitment here. And some of the highlights in our recruitment process, including using all our social media platforms, in-person marketing, reaching out to our networks and city partners like the school district, faith organizations, and just like people that we thought would be interested. We also had an ad in Tuolton Life. And like I said, from the very beginning, we discussed having a different approach to our outreach plan. We did standard city promotion, but in addition, we did intentional and personal advertising, which included bilingual recruitment, phone calls. We leveraged relationships we have built in the community. Our applications, we edited them, and we tried to make things as accessible as possible. And our goal in doing this was to eliminate any barriers to participation and to make sure that anyone that was interested in applying felt welcome to do so. We even had people drop off the applications at the library. I helped an older gentleman fill it out in person as well, so. So the Equity Committee Planning Group meetings, as I mentioned earlier, were from June 7th through November 1st of 2022. And each meeting had a different agenda and that was designed to ground us in this work of the Equity Committee Planning Group and our task. And I'll just share some of the agenda items that covered were lots of icebreakers. Lots of them. So if you ever need advice on icebreakers, let me know. And food, lots of food. That was my favorite part of the agenda. And ground rules. So the group worked together to create ground rules to make sure that everybody felt comfortable to share. We shared lots of information on Tuolton. We reviewed examples of other equity committees, structures, and code language, including hearing advice on setting up a committee from other cities, the city of Wilsonville, city of Lake Oswego, and Beaverton staff presented to us. We also reviewed the purpose of the Equity Committee Planning Group and components of the final deliverables. And some of the conversations included, why did you sign up for this committee? We got to learn what their interests were and what attracted them to this group. We discussed aspects of other committees. And we brainstormed ways to remove barriers from people who may be interested in participating in the permanent committee. The discussions we had on certain topics were thought provoking, and they did inspire some group members to open up and share their interests, their experiences, and at times frustrations. But through this process, I believe we gained profound insight into the lived experiences of the Tuolton community. And like I said, in my, in my role and my experience with the community, I really believe that this work was just really impactful and meaningful. So this brings us to the Equity Committee Planning Group recommendation. So the Equity Committee Planning Group did not review the standard code language. Instead, they focused on the most meaningful, relevant sections of the code. And then staff took the Equity Committee Planning Group recommendation based on these categories and integrated the standard code language that you see this evening. And so now Megan is going to jump in and review the draft code language.
Yeah, I get the exciting job of going through the draft code language, so buckle your seatbelts. But like Betsy said, we took the recommendations that the Equity Committee Planning Group put forward and combined it with existing code language. We have several committees already included in our code, and there's lots of standard language between them. It's not exact in every case, but we looked at a few different examples to compile what you have as a draft ordinance before you. And that came out to an ordinance with seven different sections. And I'm going to go through each section by section, and I've called out areas that were specifically recommended by the Equity Committee Planning Group, as well as aspects that were specifically recommended when the city council had their discussion in 2021. So I've got two different colors going on, but I'll highlight those when they stand out. And I promise not to read too much of the code. So the first section is the establishment of committee. So this is the name and kind of the purpose statement in a way. So my first call out, the orange is of course the name that was recommended by the Equity Committee Planning Group. We did include advisory committee for the council's discussion when they presented in November. But of course, it's the Tuolton Inclusion Diversity Equity and Access Advisory Committee as an advisory capacity for how the city. And then this yellow section is language that was included from the CCAA when they shared this conversation with the city council. And that was to build and strengthen relationships with the community as well as lower barriers to public participation in city government. All right, section two. So this section's got a few different components in it, so I've got it spread out over three slides. So the first section of this has to do with the number of committee members as well as their appointment period and their term length. So the Equity Committee Planning Group recommended nine to 13 members. We talked through a few different options. Of course, the Equity Committee Planning Group had 15 members total, which they felt was, was good because it provided enough opportunity for community members to engage on the topic. But 15 is kind of a large number in that setting. So that was a little bit of their intent in getting it down to nine to 13. And they also decided to include a range. One of the reasons that was cited for including that range was to give the CCAA some flexibility in making appointments. Nine is a robust number already, but if there's a few folks that they would really like to be included, that gives you a little bit more flexibility to add folks. They also decided on three-year terms, which is standard for our other existing city committees. And they also recommended that the term lengths be staggered. So the language as drafted says, as determined by the city council. Typically, how that happens is you, in the first round of appointments, you appoint a certain individuals for two-year term, certain individuals for a three-year term over time. It eventually evens out. The second provision is to appoint no more than two members who reside outside of the city limits. Some of our other committees have similar provisions. We talked a lot about it, and we did have several individuals on the planning group who were not residents of Tuolton. One who presented, and I believe shared this with you during their presentation, mentioned that they live just on the other side of the road from Tuolton. So very much felt a part of the Tuolton community. Another individual worked for a business in Tuolton and was interested in participating from that lens. So they discussed kind of the range of experiences that they wanted to include. All right, next one. So they talked about having a youth member. And we talked what, we talked about what a youth person is, like what is the definition of a youth? And we landed on high school age as opposed to under 18 or leaving it simply at youth. Felt that that was the appropriate age group to engage in this level of committee. And then this next paragraph, I know we talked a lot about in November. This is the only piece of the, the draft ordinance that was word by word determined by the Equity Committee Planning Group. We went through a lot of iterations of this or several iterations of this, vetted this specific component view our city attorney's office. Of course, the whole thing has now been vetted through the city attorney's office as well. But folks were really split on the decision to include this and ultimately ended up coming to a compromise with what you see up there related to the composition of membership. All right, last few things are pretty standard. So it's related to an excused absence and procedural issues. Discretion, each committee person serves at the discretion of the city council and then filling the vacancy. So this language was not specifically discussed by the Equity Committee Planning Group. Such a mouthful. I'm going to stumble over my words. All right, section three, the organization of committee. So we called this the committee positions in discussions with the planning group. So first, the most common model in our code language is to have a chair and a vice chair. You know, several of you have served in those roles. They talked about doing a model like that and ultimately decided to recommend including two co-chairs so that the leadership responsibilities could be shared more equally and disperse the power amongst many. There are also several conversations about wanting to have more people invested so that the committee had longevity in terms of the projects that they were working on, that there were more people in leadership roles to carry different projects or initiatives forward, and felt that having two co-chairs would enable that to a greater extent. And they also decided, as you can see a little bit later, to have different tenure with the committee for those two chair roles. The hope was that they could be staggered, so that you had somebody with experience, somebody with maybe less experience, so that when you do have a transition in leadership, you still have somebody there who's got more experience. The third provision, we also talked about the secretary role. And the intent behind including a secretary role was to provide additional capacity to the co-chairs for kind of miscellaneous things that may come up. And also to provide additional access to committee members about kind of government processes to a certain extent. So potentially that secretary could review minutes before they go to the co-chairs, before they go to the committee members. Or they might help with special projects that need just an extra set of hands. The intent was to provide extra capacity to the committee. But they also felt that that might not always be necessary, which is why you see it as a may rather than shall. All right, a couple more components here. So the, the fourth section of this is related to the city council representative or. So the the fourth section of this is related to the city council representative or city council liaison. Um, this is another component that's common in other city committees, although it looks a little bit differently for each. What the Equity Committee Planning Group recommended was appointing one individual from the city council's body to serve as an ex officio member, meaning that they do not um contribute to the quorum, they do not have a vote, but in other respects have full participation as a committee member, meaning they receive a copy of the agenda packet, they can participate in discussions. Their voice is certainly heard, and they have some responsibility to carry back information to the city council and maintain those open lines of communication. And then lastly, for this section, um, we will also appoint a staff member to serve as liaison to the committee to help um ensure that you are meeting public meeting laws, public record laws, and just have access to the organization as whole. All right, section four. Um, this one doesn't have anything special in it. Uh, it just says a majority of the committee uh will constitute a quorum, pretty standard language. And that the committee may also create their own policies and procedures to implement this ordinance. We, as Betsy mentioned, put together ground rules for the Equity Equity Committee Planning Group. I think that's a pretty common practice amongst our other city committees to determine our own ways of proceeding in addition to the standard uh Robert rules or rules from the council guidelines. Um, so this would enable the committee to set their own terms for some of those meetings. Spenditure of funds, another standard component of our code language. Basically, what this says is that the committee cannot expend funds without the city council's approval. Also pretty standard. All right, powers and duties. Um, this one also has quite a bit in it. So I've got the highlights. Again, the orange is from the Equity Committee Planning Group and the yellow is from your all discussion in two thousand and twenty-one. So first, in these, I'm going to go through a little bit more slowly and read them out um because there was more specific language included from the Equity Committee Planning Group. But first, to provide advice to the city council by conducting research, including engaging with a range of community members and groups to identify areas of opportunity to increase equity, inclusion, diversity, access and belonging in Tuol'otin. So the planning group recommended specific terms, including identifying areas of opportunity, engaging with a range of community members and conducting research. Number two, recommend goals, objectives and methods for the city to use to measure progress towards accomplishing or towards achieving greater equity, inclusion, diversity, access and belonging in Tuol'otin. So again, planning group talked specifically about goals, objectives and methods as well as measuring progress towards accomplishing the ultimate goal. Number three, review practices and procedures to make recommendations on how to remove or lessen barriers to public participation in city government. This was one of those items that you all had identified in establishing the ad hoc committee in the first place. All right, second part. Uh, so number four, recommend policies and procedures for the city to further empower people to connect with city elected and appointed officials and staff. Again, this was from your discussions. Lastly, on this one, make recommendations. Pretty standard. All right, section seven and our last section, also standard for some of our other committees in that they will provide an annual report to the city council. We recently had the YAC, the Juanita Poll Center, um, it could be in a similar format. The change from our other standard committees is that we have a date of by no later than December thirty-first, which felt cleaner since the committee was working on an annual calendar for making their position appointments. So that is the the seven components of the draft ordinance. I've got one more slide, and then I'm happy to, as you engage in discussion, keep the slides up so you can talk through specific ones. But my last slide has to do with next steps for tonight's discussion and moving forward. So tonight, we're here to receive your feedback. We'll take notes on what that feedback is so that we can make changes to the draft ordinance with the plan to bring back an ordinance for you all to review and adopt at an upcoming meeting. Um, after that point, we can begin recruitment for the IDI committee. Uh, continuing with the CCAA interviews and city council appointments. Um, the other piece of news to share is that we've had a few conversations about where this work will live within the organization moving forward um and who the staff liaison essentially will be, and we're thinking we'll have two, one of which is Betsy, uh, and the other is Jerian Thompson, our library director and equity inclusion officer. Um, we think they'll together do really well, um, certainly in having it bundled with the rest of our DEI initiatives made a lot of sense. So you'll see Jerian at the next one. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, council president.
Any um questions, comments or suggested revisions? Council Brooks?
I just first wanted to thank everybody that participated in the um formation committee and um wanted to thank you both. I heard such really good things about your facilitation of the process um from several different community members. There is a lot of excitement in the community around this committee. Um, and I did get some feedback around recruitment, um, ideas for reaching out to um like human service organizations, places where there's people that are in need. And while I'm saying that, I also want to say that it was the most committee members when I was on that committee that we've ever interviewed for a committee, so I really appreciate the interest from the community and um you know, I don't have any real changes to suggest. I like that you highlighted all of the suggestions by the committee members and the direction that council started off with. I'm really looking forward to having feedback from our community members that haven't always maybe felt as included um and that haven't been as included historically. Um, in understanding those um pieces and understanding those pieces better as the city council so that we can do better and just have a I just think that inclusion makes um everything more interesting and more filled as far as our mission and our uh what we're doing as a city. So I just wanted to thank you both and thank all the participants and my fellow counselors for at the time unanimously supporting this committee's formation.
Neither? Councilor is?
No comment, just um, I mean, not a question, but more of a comment. It, I I did what Counselor Ruth have said about the work that was being put into this uh committee, the creators of the committee. I I think that was um, that was the hardest work, I think. Thing to do, and I really commend you two for managing um the people that we we appointed, we looked at and and then just handed over to you. I mean, I feel like we did the easy part, you guys did the hardest part. And I'll thank you for that. Thank you for putting a lot of effort in and being patient and kind and passionate. Um, but thank you. I I really, I really have enjoyed seeing this. Um, never in my life have I have experienced anything like this, where I see something from beginning almost to the end. Um, and I'm just really proud of that, so thank you.
Is is there a way to see if Mayor Bubanek has any comments?
Okay.
Right, I'm fine. I think it's a very good job on the the changes in the the verbiage. Um, I think it looks good.
Okay, um, well, I have a couple, of course, um, things with it. I, oh gosh, I can't read my, oh. Well, first of all, thank you. I think this was, um, I think you had a lot of, um, you had the word engaged, and I think it was a very engaged group, and that sometimes means a difficult, but I think everybody had the right intent, and so it's really great that you guys, um, our counselors and everybody in the group really put everything into this and that we're um actually going to have a way to help with our inclusive community vision. I had a question about the secretary, but it was a may thing, so because I wonder if it's kind of redundant if there's a staff person there doing a lot of that role. But it's worded may, so I'm okay with that part. And then um, I wondered, um, there was a way to report if you had an excused absence, but um is there anything where if a person's absent for a number of times that they cannot, you know? I mean, to me, this is from my experience, if a person, for whatever reason, has gone too long from meetings, there really should be someone else in there participating. So is there any wording in there about the length of turn, number of absences?
There is not any language currently in there, and we did look at including some of that. We have for our other committees. There are specifics related to removing somebody from a committee, um, including absences or unexcused absences. Um, our city attorney's advice was to not include that, um, because it provides um per, due process then becomes relevant if there was an issue with somebody leaving it. So their recommendation was not to include specific language related to removing somebody from the committee. And for that reason, we left out this.
Would it be a situation of um maybe the co-chairs would meet with that person and say, are you able to participate in some more?
Yeah.
Discussion of that sort?
I think that is one at, one way that it could happen. It could also be included in the committee's rules and protocols that they put together, some expectation related to attendance.
That makes sense. And then my last question, this one just kind of throws me. What would be an example of this committee conducting research? That kind of threw me.
Yeah, so I think um an example that we talked about with the planning group, and you can fill in if I'm forgetting details, uh, community research. Um, some potentially putting out a survey, but also as it relates to perhaps we have a city project and we want to get community input. We asked the group to help us get res, get input from the community um in those types of situations. There was also, we spent our first meeting reviewing data about the community. Sherilyn gave a presentation on the census information, the Tuol'otin Community Survey. We looked at some maps of the area, and there was a lot of interest, um, more interest than we could accommodate in the meeting time that we had in learning more about the community. And so I think that was another component of research that intrigued folks participating.
Wow. Great, great job, everybody. Thank you.
All right. I think we're done. Thank you all.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, look, we're early. Just pointing that out, Mayor Bubanek. Um.
Can I offer something up? Or um, you know, on the agenda, I'm going to review the council rules, and that really wants to be a work session item.
Did you want to do that now?
We might be able to fit it in if you.
Yeah, would you half an hour do it and have a little break?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Less than that.
Is anybody opposed to that moving? Okay. Well, Sherilyn.
Oh, I'm on it right now.
Yeah, let's do it.
How fast it shut up. What is that? Aids magic.
That's impressive.
All right. Well, uh, thank you for advancing me on the agenda. Um, so the city council rules, it's a big document, uh, thirty-four pages. It was created out of a desire to have a place where instructions and guidance could be documented and passed down from council to council. It was meant to be a living document and adjusted as needed. Um, can I do this? Oh, yes, I can. Um, so a a subcommittee of the council began meeting in two thousand and seventeen. The rules were adopted in February of two thousand and eighteen and then amended slightly in two thousand and twenty. There are a total of twelve rules, as you can see there. And you will see throughout the document that the city charter is referenced many times and included as an appendix. The committee felt it would be helpful to include these references as they provide guidance and structure to the council with the understanding that these portions cannot be changed or adjusted by the city council, only a vote of the people. So rule one, A one, uh, Robert's Rules of Order are generally the guidelines for meeting procedures. However, the committee was explicit in saying that Robert's Rules of Order should not be used as a weapon to make things confusing. Rule one, A two, calls out that, as you discussed in your recent advance, members of the council should be recognized by the mayor or chair before commenting and should be courteous to each other during interactions. Rule one, C, um, talks about a quorum, so as defined by the charter, it has to include either the mayor or the council president. So technically, if the five counselors were together minus the mayor and council president, a quorum does not exist. And you could not conduct city business. However, the next section, section D, explains that if both the mayor and council president are absent, the counselors would elect a temporary mayor pro temp just for that meeting, so problem solved. Um, rule one, F, um, an agenda is required by Oregon Public Meetings Law. So we aim to have the agenda and pack it out at least seven days prior to the meeting. Other than land use items, that is not a legal requirement, however, so sometimes it could be delayed um a day or two. Also, under this section, if you wish to have something added to the agenda, the procedure is to raise it with the council. Adding something to a future agenda requires a majority vote. If an item is added to that meeting, that same uh agenda that night, it requires a unanimous vote. Section uh one of, or I of this rule deals with public comment. So a public comment period is reserved for every council meeting. Speakers are given three minutes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda already. Counselors can ask questions of the speaker after being recognized by the chair, but should not engage in back and forth conversation. Section J talks about the consent agenda, where routine items, including the minutes, are placed. Of note, in this section, appointments to committees cannot be on consent. The subcommittee that developed these rules were very adamant that those appointments should be highlighted and celebrated. Rule two deals with council meeting times, location and frequency. Section A calls out that you will generally hold two meetings a month on the second and fourth Monday, except there won't be a meeting, the second meeting of December. If the second or fourth Monday falls on a holiday, the meeting will be held on Tuesday. I will point out that the charter only says you have to meet at least once a month. I may add. This rule doc documents that both special meetings and emergency meetings can be called. A special meeting requires at least twenty-four hour notice, and an emergency meeting requires that you explain why twenty-four hours notice could not be provided. I somehow missed a slide, but also in this uh rule, it talks about executive sessions and they are governed by Oregon Revised Statute that is very prescriptive about what can be discussed in an exec session. Section E of the rule deals with work sessions. Their purpose is to prepare you for future agenda items or to make you aware of relevant information. No formal or final action is to be taken at work session. Work session is the appropriate time for a counselor to request that an item be placed on a future work session, and then a majority of council is required to agree. Section F reflects requirements. Oh, wait. Oh, wait, section F, yes. Section F requ, reflects requirements contained in Oregon statute, including meeting at a place that is open to the public and is within our city boundary. I'm not sure where City Hall is, but we're supposed to meet there. Meetings can be held outside the city, however, no decisions can be made and no deliberations toward a decision can be made. You can meet with other jurisdictions, such as the school district or other cities, but the meeting needs to be held within their boundary if it's not in Tuol'otin. Section H talks about counselor attendance, referencing the charter regarding what creates a vacancy. So if you're going to be absent, you should let me know as soon as reasonably possible. This was, of course, created before the pandemic and the widespread use of virtual meetings. The rules do call out that it is preferred that counselors attend in person and that you should not attend virtually more than two consecutive meetings and remain present for the entire meeting.
Troubled, right?
So that may be a potential for a change. Rule three is all about the exciting topic of ordinances and resolutions. An ordinance is a law that is passed by the city council in your legislative capacity. An ordinance, according to our charter, must be read An ordinance, according to our charter, must be read fully and distinctly at a council meeting on two different days. However, an ordinance can be enacted in one meeting if it is approved by a unanimous vote after being read twice. And that reading can be by title only. So two readings by title only, and then a unanimous vote. If it's not unanimous, then it comes back to the next meeting. Also, according to charter, a roll call must be taken for all ordinances, so that means that ordinances are never on consent. A resolution is an action taken by the council to adopt a policy, rule, or expression of opinion. Unlike ordinances, they do not need to be read at a meeting prior to adoption. They can be on consent, but if they are on general business, they require a roll call vote. Rule Four is all things land use hearings, which is governed by state law. Chad Jacobs, our contract city attorney, will be here at the next council meeting to do a training on this topic, so I will not go through those sections tonight, for which you should be grateful. Uh, Rule Five, Section A, is the procedure described in Roberts Rules of Order regarding motions. So making them, amending them, withdrawing them, and calling for a vote on them. Section C talks about debate on an issue and reinforces that counselors should be recognized by the mayor and confine remarks to the question at hand. It also specifically asks counselors to not interrupt unless it's to call a, a point of order. Interestingly enough, the rules give the counselor who made the motion the privilege of having the last word. I don't know if that's a Roberts Rules of Order thing, but that's what the rules say. Uh, this rule contains guidance about public comment. Although not legally required, the rules state that public, the public will be allowed to comment on matter, matter, on any matter that requires a vote. Section Six, or Item Six, outlines when members of the public may be asked to leave the meeting, and that boisterous demonstrations are considered inappropriate. A whole rule is reserved for the topic of minutes. But there's nothing particular to call out there, other than that they must be in written form, and that any counselor can request an amendment or correction before they are approved. I also missed another slide for Rule Seven, but it deals with council appointments, including the city manager, who also holds the title as of city recorder by charter. You also appoint the municipal court judge and the pro temp judges, but you may not interfere with their work. Uh, this deal, rule also deals with council subcommittees. There is currently only one standing subcommittee, that's the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments, whose purpose is to screen and recommend appointments to city boards, commissions, and committees. This is where the, you were asking one day about the name, so this is where it, it resides. So if you wanted to change that, it would come through the city rules. The CCAA conducts interviews and then forwards recommendations to the full council. Approval must be on general business, not consent. And interestingly enough, the full council could appoint a candidate even if they were not considered by the CCAA. The Ethics Section of Rule Eight is governed by Oregon Statute. In addition, the section details actions that counselors must refrain from, including disco- disclosing confidential information, taking actions which benefit special interest groups or persons, expressing an opinion that is contrary to the official position of the city without saying so, conducting yourself in a way that would bring discredit to the city, and not profiting from your position on council. Section B discusses decorum at a council meeting and requires the presiding officer, as well as members of council, to preserve decorum. City staff and audience mi- members must also observe these rules of decorum. The committee got very specific with what disruptive behavior looks like. Clapping, cheering, hooting, hollering, gesturing, guffawing, booing, hissing, making remarks out of turn, and using profanity could get one kicked out. Hissing. Section C outlines that if the mayor or a member of council appears as a representative of the city or makes a statement as a representative, oh, as, or makes a statement as a representative of the city, they may only state the official position as approved by the council. If you appear before another governmental agency, the media, or an organization in your personal capacity, you must state that you are expressing your own opinion and not that of the city. Use of social media is addressed in Section D of this rule. There are laws that govern public meetings and public records, which Chad will also talk about at the next meeting, that social media falls into, so just be very cautious. Counselors are encouraged to conduct themselves online so as to bring credit upon the city. In addition, you should refrain from posting comments that express a council position before that position is authorized by the council, or express an opinion without stating that it is your opinion and not the city council's. Rule Nine details guidance as you interact with city staff. Bottom line, council must respect the separation between your role and the city manager's role by not interfering with day-to-day operations of the city and refraining from any action that would undermine the city management's authority. As we have discussed, inquiries sent to staff should be copied to me, and you should limit individual inquiries and requests for information to those questions that can be readily answered, as opposed to something that will create additional work. The exception to copying the city manager on questions is that you may contact the city attorney if it involves allegations of misconduct by the city manager, or to discuss parliamentary procedures. Enforcement of these rules is discussed in Rule Ten, and says that the council can discipline violations with a public re- reprimand. The council may conduct an investigation and meet an executive session to discuss this. However, before issuing a public reprimand, there are steps the council has to go through to give notice and afford the affected member the opportunity to have an open hearing. Rule Eleven documents that these rules can be amended by a majority of the council. They could also be repealed, but must be accompanied by replacement rules, which would not go into effect until thirty days after the replacement was approved. Section A of Rule Twelve documents that you are required by state law to file a statement of economic interest annually. Section B documents that you are entitled to receive health insurance benefits through the city. Section C documents that you each receive a technology stipend at the beginning of your term. Section D documents that each of you receive a twenty dollar credit on your water bill. Section E is the adopted travel policy, which basically says that you will be made whole for normal expenses incurred while carrying out your official duties. The rule calls out that you should use prudence in the expenditure of city funds, or else you get in trouble with Don. Uh, registration fees for conferences and meetings and trainings will be covered. You are encouraged to try to get discounted rates. The city will pay for airfare. You can upgrade to business class or first class, but at your own cost. Car rental or ground transportation is reimbursable. If you do use your own car, you will be reimbursed at the current IRS rate. Mileage for city business conducted within the city is not considered a reimbursable expense. Uh, parking fees incurred while doing city business are reimbursable, as is lodging when travel requires an overnight accommodation. Additional room charges are your own responsibility. Section Six documents that the city will reimburse you for meals as part of travel or while conducting city business. And then finally, under Section F of Rule Twelve, if a counselor receives reimbursement for a conference or event, you are required to give an oral or written report about the conference or event to the council. And with that, it took less than thirty minutes.
And twenty. Any questions or comments?
All right.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh. Oh.
Not that easy. So I had, I just have two really quick ones. So if, um, we wanted to change the name of a committee, um, we would have to ask council that we could bring that up for discussion at the next meeting. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, um, oh, on the expressing opinions, I'm going to give the like, for instance thing. If one of us were to go before another, like, say, city council or governmental body, and we were testifying, and we said, this is my opinion, but I have this occupation and I also serve on council. Is it okay to say that, as long as you first say?
I believe it is. That is my understanding. As long as you're saying that this is my opinion, the council has not taken an official opinion on this.
Right.
I'm stating it as my own, my own opinion as a, as a counselor.
Bring up the, just to show that you have a background in knowledge. Okay. That's it. Thank you, Sherilyn.
Yeah. Yes. All right. Cool. Got that off the agenda.
Yeah, so, um, we can do council communications. We'll have time for a break, so I guess we'll do the usual and start with, um, Counselor Hillier.
Good question. Pratt, I attended an event in Oregon City was to share, share knowledge about their hundredth anniversary and got to see their new facility there. It's just, uh, an incredible facility. It was nice to get to meet some other people. It was the first time that I had had the opportunity to go out and about. And, um, so I was appreciative for that, and I'm sure Counselor Pratt has some other things she can from that. A more seasoned.
Hey, Counselora.
Um, on Monday, we, last Monday, sixth, we had our, uh, console, city council advisory appointment committee meeting. Uh, and we interviewed some really great people, uh, again, from, uh, the parks, from, um, the arts and, uh, budget, just some, some, um, positions are open right now. And just, it was wonderful. I mean, we had, um, some great people, some, some young people, and it's just amazing, like always, to, to get to know the community through this. Th- this way, just talking to them and conversing with them. So soon we'll have, um, names and new appointments for them.
Counselor Gonzalez?
I met with, uh, the Hamlet Group, uh, we made a file of forms. Um, what they provided was an update of where they've come from, from, I guess, maybe fifteen years ago, and also where they're at now, and some of the concerns they may have.
Counselor Brooks?
Um, we did the round of, had presentations through the Policy Advisory Board and, um, rated and scored and voted, um, last meeting. And, um, so those funds, you can look online, or if you'd like more information, let me know, for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Grant Funds. Um, I do want to say that it's less competitive now, that there's the own Hillsborough, Beaverton, and Tigard has entered into their own disbursements. So there were leftover funds from, um, not human services, but there's, um, infrastructure projects that affect people's wellbeing, and so sidewalks put in by schools and different kinds of things like that. Um, and so if there's ways that the city or people think of ideas around, um, you know, that would be a good fit, that is just something that, that we had leftover funds for. And, um, so you'd have a good chance, hopefully. Um, it stays that way, and there will be another round of, um, of, uh, considerations for one more grant. So we'll be meeting on the first to listen to those applicants. There's two applicants for that one. We also did the Climate Action Plan Meeting, um, which was well done and informative, and, um, I'm trying to think of, I think that was pretty much it. Thanks.
Mayor Rubenek?
Uh, thank you. Uh, back on May twenty-fifth, I attended the WEA Board Meeting. Uh, of note, there was approval of their budget for next fiscal year, and also a update from the legislature on how they're going to try to incorporate the CHIPS changes in the CHIPS Act, um, so that we can attract, uh, you know, high-tech, high-manufacturing, uh, firms here in the metro region. Uh, so that's one of the, one of the biggest things you're going to be talking about in this session, in addition to houselessness and transportation issues. On the twenty-sixth, attended the Metro Mayor's Consortium, uh, where we, uh, reviewed our legislative agenda uh, as a group, and then went through all the bills that might impact cities. And, um, you know, giving our availability for last minute or very impromptu trips to Salem to testify on different things, uh, that relate to cities. On the twenty-seventh, uh, attended the Green Line Celebration for Wright Connection. Uh, the new Green Line, as you know, is going now from Bridgeport Village a way out to Roland Hills Church, and eventually will extend out to Oregon City. Uh, from January twenty-eighth through the beginning of February, myself and uh, Counselor Hillier, uh, attended the CATCA Conference, the Anti-Drug, Anti-Alcohol Group, uh, for our students. Um, Washington County, uh, helped fund this, so I met a lot of the Twalton Together board members. And, uh, we did have some really great training there. Also, I did, uh, got to meet in person with our new Congresswoman, uh, Andrea Salinas, and her new digs, which she still has to get decorated, but she's a little too busy for that right now. And then, um, on the ninth, the Washington County Mayor's Chair Meeting, uh, big subject of discussion was the time, place, manner changes that are required for cities or organizations, uh, cities or counties that have camping bans. And it's one of the things, uh, Sherilyn is working on to get implemented by, uh, July first, so we'll hear more about that. Uh, this is required by the legislature. And finally, today, uh, the Washington County Corning Committee, in addition to the county presenting their RTP plan, uh, TriMet also rolled out what they're going to be working on for the next few years, as well as ODA. Uh, and we, the last subject of the discussion at that meeting was about M-Step and the impacts of, you know, the, the budget situation at the county, where they re-evaluating, um, how they fund the projects that are remaining. They have about a seventy million dollar gap, and what they estimated the cost would be versus what the actual costs are on the final two phases of the last M-Step. So they might be reorganizing, reprioritizing, trimming down the deliverables to close that gap down. And then as far as the financing of the next phase of M-Step, that might be delayed so that those funds could be used to finish up the projects that need to get done. Uh, some more to come with that. We'll probably hear more in April when the, uh, the county solidifies their budget. But M-Step will be impacted. Uh, one of the things that was asked is a four, seven, or ten percent uh, cut to the general fund transfer for M-Step. Uh, so those, again, are less projects that'll get done, or it'll take way longer to get them done than we anticipated. And that's all I have.
Okay. Well, um, like Counselor Hillier said, we went to the Oregon City was a hundred anniversary, and it was the operating building, and it was very cool, LEED-certified building. And, um, what was most fun for me is I got to see people that I've served with on C four for a few years that I've never met in person before. So that was kind of fun. And then, um, Counselor Brooks and I also attended the Green Line opening, um, and Susan Noack gave a great speech at that. Um, we had a, um, meeting with the Twalton Climate Action Plan Steering Committee, and I think we mostly went over, um, refining the details of what we want to see, and I'm just going to make a comment here because I'm on the Clackamas County one, and I am just amazed at how I'm just going to make a comment here because I'm on the Clackamas County one and I am just amazed at how great this is, I think this is going to be, because I think it's going to be very user-friendly and. And really make a difference for our city, so thank you. Um. Then I went to C four and, oh, the one little piece of information I got there is the twenty-first is when that um NEPA, the environmental report's supposed to be out for the, the IQ five tolling. Um, and um, the big thing I'm excited about there is that I got um. Voted on to represent C four and the one, our one act, and this is the Region Air, Region One Area. Commission on Transportation, so it's a group of thirty-one people, some elected, some not. And the Region One of ODOT is Hood River, Multloma County, Clackamas County. Our half of Washington County, so we're representing that whole region and Multloma County. So to me, it's important to have a voice outside of Portland, but. Um, so, and I went, attended my first meeting at that on Monday, so that's why I missed the CCAA, but um, and on that, we. Oh, gosh, we went over the stiff recommendations that the subcommittee had done, so there wasn't a lot of input for me, but it was very interesting and. And it's just um, between the committees Mayor Rubenick's on and um Counselor Gonzalez being on the two oh five committee, I think we've got. A pretty strong voice to advocate for transportation projects and um our opinions on tolling. Um, then on Friday, I went to the Clackamas County Legislative Summit and that was some representative, state representatives. Um, and the big top issue was homelessness. Um, and ideas of how to provide housing in. Clackamas County outside the cities, they don't even allow a accessory death, accessory dwelling units yet, so they're pushing for that, to allow for that. And there's a lot of push to um. Just um redo, or you know, get the permitting process more in line and make this simpler and. Um, talk about making the system development charges less to add these accessory dwelling units as opposed to adding a whole another. House onto your property. And of course, the second issue was tolling. Um. I think um, we've talked diversion to death, so there was more talk about um, just the expected cost of tolling. You know, we're talking, the, the, right now, there look. Numbers being thrown out there are two twenty per gantry for the two gantries. They're going to double that for. Light trucks and quadruple that for heavy trucks, which have not been defined. And then if, I don't know if you've been reading, but um, when they do the regional ability project, the whole loop. They're considering doing a per mile charge and then there's going to be tolling um, the new um IFI bridge going over to Washington, so. You know, this could add up to a whole lot of money for people, so that's the big concern now. And that's the end of my story, so we've got ten minutes.
Counsel President, you have to review the consent agenda.
Oh, the consent agenda. Okay, so, oh, for the meeting, um, Counselor Brooks is up for the pledge.
Sure.
Okay, and then. Does anybody um want anything removed from the consent agenda? All right. Now we're dismissed for a few moments.